At this point in time, I do expect that you would have one more person, but at this point in time, you have more than enough people to start. You certainly have your quorum. It is seven o'clock, so the floor is yours.
All right, we'll call the meeting order at seven o'clock. We'll start off with your call.
Gail Linden.
Blake Moore.
Sarah Keteris.
Adam Wallace.
David Schwartz.
Chris Mombiowski.
Jessica Steinhardt.
And looking for approval for the.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And approval for the minutes from May 27 to 2025.
I move to approve.
Through, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And now for out of number five, Mayor's presentation for the recreation master plan.
Mr. Chair, at this point in time, I'd like to introduce to you Jane Dixon. She's here from McKenna, and she's doing the master plan, the recreation master plan, for the Parks and Recreation Department. This is informative. If you have any comments, suggestions, you should feel free. The public is also free to comment on this. So if you have any questions or anything like that, you should go right ahead.
Jane, would you like to?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me. You have a presentation in your packet, and unfortunately, the technology tonight doesn't allow us to project it, but I will cover everything in that, and if you want to reference that, you can. As Hank mentioned, I am with McKenna, and the city hired us in May to perform the Parks and Rec Master Plan. This is a process that happens every five years or so to update the strategic plan for the Parks and Rec facilities and programming. I'm part of a larger team that's supporting this project, and we've had a lot of touchpoints with the community, which I'll go through. But I'll first start off by just kind of explaining the planning process in terms of Parks and Rec planning in comparison to master planning. For those of you who aren't familiar, the Michigan DNR requires that cities and communities have updated master plans for their Parks and Rec facilities every five years. This carrot is kind of dangled of grant funding opportunities. If you do not have an up-to-date plan, you cannot qualify to apply for any grant funding through the state. So beyond just that, the plan obviously provides a roadmap for the Parks and Recreation decisions over the next five years. It anticipates the long-range investments that are going to occur, the capital improvement projects that need to be undertaken, and then also kind of benchmarks where the facilities are at the current moment, and documents that, as well as making sure that whatever direction the parks facilities are going is supported by the community. I know that there's been few iterations of parks planning in the community over the last four years or so, lots of different variations of concept plans for various parks. We really wanted to create a plan that was comprehensive and also something the community had input on, so it wasn't simply just something that the engineers drew up. Obviously, the technical component is a part of the consideration, but having that input from the community was essential, and that's part of the reason I'm here today, is so that I can get your input in how this works with the master plan and the goals of the Planning Commission. So just to reiterate, this is not a plan that obligates any sort of funding, or sets programs in stone, or creates inflexible policies. It's really a guidebook for the city to use as they continue to invest and figure out what is important to fund in terms of Parks and Recreation projects and programming. There are requirements that the MDNR sets out. We make sure that all of our plans are MDNR compliant. Over 47 years, we've never had a plan that wasn't accepted by the MDNR. And then we also look beyond that five-year scope and try to lay out that kind of 10-year action plan. Five years can be a kind of short amount of time if you're looking at larger, hopeful projects, and it gives you a place to start when you come back to it and revisit it in five years, to say, okay, this is what we need and want to do for the next five years. And I just want to emphasize kind of the difference between maintenance and capital projects. The previous plan was really maintenance-heavy and maintenance-focused, and one of the things we heard was, well, we just never got anything done. We didn't see any results from the planning process, and we don't want that to happen again. So we are focusing more on capital improvements this time, larger projects, investments in the facilities, in the parks, in the rec facility as well. And we'll make sure that we link the city up to any potential grant opportunities and funding applications. So in terms of what the plan looks at, we do benchmark the community's facilities to national standards, which are provided by the National Recreation and Parks Authority, and that really looks at how well are you providing facilities from basketball, baseball, soccer, all the different types of parks opportunities you can think of, both indoor and outdoor, in comparison to other communities of your size based off population. I can tell you that Huntington Woods is largely phenomenal in terms of the size of the community to the amount of facilities that you have. The other aspect of this is an accessibility inventory and seeing how the parks rank across accessibility standards. This means how people can get into the parks from sidewalks, if there's a restroom, is the park, you know, generally able to be found, and then all the way up to, does it have a universally accessible playground? So those are definitely components that we want to recommend. It's really difficult to get to a fully accessible park unless it's brand-new, but there are definitely things incrementally that can be improved. The walkability analysis is something that we look at in terms of thinking about how the parks play into being a facet of the neighborhoods. So we do take a look at, see if there is an area where certain age of children, we break it out zero to four, so kind of toddler, to elementary school age, and then kind of teen age, as well as 65-plus populations where they're clustered in the community, so that we can identify if there is a trend. If we know, okay, there's a lot of toddlers in this area, let's look at making sure that they're close to those types of facilities, whether it's, you know, age-appropriate playgrounds, or toddler swings. And in comparison, you know, if we have a 65-plus population that's clustered in the community, then we want to provide those senior facilities as well. So I think this is one of the ways that this kind of connects into the master planning process, and maybe some of the initiatives and objectives that the Planning Commission has outlined through that, thinking about how these parks can play a role in complete streets, greater connectivity, as well as sustainability. And I do want this to be an opportunity, if you have ideas, not even just as planning commissioners, but especially as planning commissioners, to incorporate in the plan, because this is kind of our last stop before we draft the plan and present it for public comment. So I will, I'll stop here. I'll keep going, but I'll stop here just to see if anyone has any initial thoughts in terms of goals that they have for the parks at this point.
Questions?
Yes. Okay, so I'm your public engagement, which I've seen a lot of elements, maybe because I'm involved, I'm more aware to go see what's available. And it says that 418 people go up to the survey. Is that?
No, this is, I'm sorry, we didn't have the survey closed when this presentation was created, so things are a little bit out of date, but it was just over 200 contributions that we had in the survey.
Oh, 200 surveys?
Yes.
Okay. So I think it's hard, because there's around 6,300 residents, and a lot of people don't know that this is happening. So how do we fully engage the neighborhood and the community to have input? Like, is there ever a voting process once it's submitted as to what the ideas are, or?
So there will be a 30-day public comment period where the draft will be publicly presented, and people can provide their comments on the ideas as they're presented in the draft. I would love to hear your ideas on how else we can get the word out. You know, we utilized the eBlast, the newsletter, Facebook, had yard signs out in the parks at different events as well. So if there are other things that we can be doing to...
Well, I think if people actually saw what the changes were going to be, they would have, be more inclined to speak up or vote or get involved. I think when you're like, oh, what do you guys want to see with the parks, it's kind of vague, but when there's things that are being removed and major changes happening, people tend to want to get more involved. So like, is there ever going to be a time that maybe this, you know, layout is presented, you know, as far as removing the tennis courts from the rec center and putting in pavilions, and, you know, completely removing the skate park and the lower waiting area and putting in tennis courts? Is that going to be, you know, set up somewhere where people can actually see, like, this is the change that's happening? Like, do you like this? Do you not like this? Leave a comment.
So just to start, these draft kind of concepts that you're referencing were not necessarily recommendations that are coming out of this plan. These were plans that the city had, the engineer, complete last year, and for whatever reason, did not, they did not decide to proceed with them at that moment. So it's still in question whether this is relevant and whether this is going to be the recommendation. So that was one of the reasons that we were doing this, is so that we didn't have just five engineer plans that no one had input on.
Okay.
So I do think during the comment period will be the opportunity for people to say, all right, this, yes, no, let's get a vote on what actually people want, because it is hard to know just from having a couple of conversations. You don't want the loudest voice to be the only voice in the room.
Right.
So that's really where that opportunity comes in, and if it's something that, I think naturally, we're inclined to present, you know, out in the lobby at the rec center because this is recreation-related, but if there are other places that we need to put these things out and have people give their comments on them, I would, I'd love to know where else they should be kind of presented.
I can definitely, I mean, you guys are doing a great job, and I know that it's not hard, it's not easy to collect information from a bunch of people. So I totally understand that. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Like, what?
Yeah, we're coming up to that point of, we haven't formed the recommendations, or in that process right now over the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So I don't have anything to say this is what the recommendation is at this point, but we will have that public input process once that happens.
Okay. Thank you.
A couple of questions going along with Sarah's or whatever else to try to get public engagement, considering all of the construction that's going on at City Hall, in front of the library, in the parking lot at the rec center, on the other side of the school. Sometimes there isn't a great area to put things for people to come in and see, because it's hard enough to get a parking space to come here for a meeting and try to get into the building. So this was supposed to be on our agenda at the June meeting, and the library didn't have any power last June, last month in June, so we're a month off. Is this proposal also a month off, and we're not targeting a September date, but instead, we're looking more out of curiosity to give people enough time for engagement to an October date?
There's no plans right now to change it to an October date. I've seen where we get into the comment period, and we decide, you know, we need more time to vet these recommendations. So it's not without possibility that it gets shifted to October. Everything else on the planning process did occur when we had scheduled it, so this was really the only meeting that fell out of sync because of that cancellation. So later in the presentation, I kind of outlined some of the public engagement opportunities. In June, we did two parks tours, so kind of east-side tours and then the west-side tours over two days. And then, as you mentioned, we had the survey, the comment map. We were recently at the concert in the park, kind of looking at designing, not having design recommendations, but getting design input on the parks facilities at the summer concert, and then last Thursday out in front of the rec center, which I know is, it can be hard to get there, but to try and grab some people who are picking kids up from camp or going to and from the pool. So everything else up to this point, I feel like we have the input. We need to at least form those preliminary recommendations and go to the Parks Board and get their input before we release it for public comment. So that's currently the plan, but that's not to say it can't change.
How well-received were the bus tours, not necessarily with committee members, or Parks and Rec employees, or Parks and Rec's committee members, but through residents coming around to see, you know, what was going on between an east and a west tour, and it was just a couple of days ago at the concert in the park, that there was engagement there with boards and stuff like that? How well-received, you know, was there for the community? And I'd love to hear that we needed more than one bus because we had more people that wanted to come, but I don't think that was the case.
No, we did not need more than one bus. I will say, though, it was primarily residents. It was not, I don't, I think we might have had one Parks and Rec board member. It was...
The bus tour that I went on had two residents.
Oh, okay, two residents, and then...
Two residents that did not serve on any sort of governance or advisory boards.
Um, and...
Jessica, did you say two residents?
Two residents that did not serve on any governance or advisory boards.
Okay.
And I was, unfortunately, I was sick that week, so I had to have my colleagues fill in for me, so I can't speak directly, but I know from my sign-up sheets that I had about eight people who had RSVP'd for each tour. I don't know that everyone that had RSVP'd made it out to the tour, but it was not only Parks and Rec board members or commission members, to my knowledge.
Okay. You also have in our packet, maintenance versus capital projects, and that's your table 16. And out of your table 16, there are one, two, three, four, five. Only six parks on this sheet are all, do we have 11 parks or 12 parks? Are all of them proposed and being looked at? Because I didn't get a chance to see other things, but, you know, for example, it talked about on the Coolidge, Elgin Park to upgrade the play equipment. That's already happened.
Right. So this is actually the last plans table of recommendations, so...
You mean the last...
The previous plan from 2019.
Okay.
This is the table, I was really trying to highlight that in the 2019 plan, it was primarily maintenance.
Okay, would have been nice to know that, as I was spending all this time trying to say, this has been done, this has been done, or whatever else, that this was a proposal in the master plan for 2019 to 2025, and, you know, now we can see what have we accomplished in there. Because one of the things that it's saying, in at least all six parks that are listed on there, and the question is, are they still talking about it, is to put outdoor exercise equipment in each of the parks, not just the Reynolds Park that already has them. So I'm concentrating in looking at some of these kinds of things as to, you know, where are those suggestions and plans, and how do the residents see that proposal and get to know it, see what did we have for the last five years, and what did we accomplish on it, and what is our projection for the next five years, and I think they need to see those.
Thank you.
Can you say again, how many people completed the online survey?
We had 200 contributions, and then it was 160 contributors, but that's by IP address, so it could have been multiple people in a household.
And when does the survey close?
It closed just last week, last Friday.
Okay. And there's no plans to extend that at all?
It was open from June 1st through basically, you know, the third week in July, so that was, we had already extended it out from when we originally planned to close it at the beginning of July, right after July 4th. And there is an interest to keep the planning process going, so I don't know that we would, we definitely saw a decline in the amount of responses over time, so I'm not sure how many more we would receive if we did extend it.
Do you know how it compares to the number of survey responses we got five years ago, when the previous?
Not off the top of my head.
And then the other question is, since we don't have a projector, projector and a screen, were we expected to read the little teeny small print?
No.
Because I don't care if I have 3.00 magnifying glasses on top of another pair of magnifying, I can't read it.
No, I apologize. I had anticipated really just using it as a visual to accompany kind of the talking points and the discussion, so I realize that this format isn't ideal.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair, just a comment on that. I talked to our video editor, and Tom has indicated that he can superimpose this program onto the tape that'll be available for this meeting. So because we don't have all of the technology here, doesn't mean we don't have some of the technology, and Tom was willing to take that and interject that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but that would occupy a space in the bottom corner of that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And will that be open?
That'll be on the public, that'll be on our YouTube channel.
Okay, good. So it's open to the public so that you can see?
Everything is open to the public.
Right, but I'm just saying, it's, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I will, I'll finish, and then public comment maybe at the end. Is that appropriate?
I think there's a question back here.
I don't know if we're allowed, I'm sorry.
We'll take public at the end.
Okay.
The public at the end of this discussion, not at the end of the whole meeting.
Thank you.
Right.
This is an agenda item.
So in addition to kind of those connectivity aspects that I was discussing, we're also looking at incorporating greater levels of accessibility to the playgrounds and thinking about universal design, both in access physically, but also in terms of what types of things are offered for a variety of ages, as well as sensory needs, social needs, and so not just purely play equipment that you're climbing and running on if you're not, if you're not inclined, or you're not physically able, but also looking at opportunities for play in terms of like types of play acting theater, soundscapes, water tables, and those were all options that we kind of had through our Design a Park process during the summer concert series and when we were in front of the recreation center. And then, you know, we had the rain today. Looking at sustainability in the parks is a big component, and looking at parks as infrastructure. So we don't want to increase any pervious surface, impervious surface. We do want to increase pervious surface so that we can continue to soak that rainwater in, prevent flooding from people's basements, and look at how we can incorporate more trees, more natural plant matter that helps absorb that rainwater and stormwater runoff, and looking at how each one of these parks can be part of this larger network to build up the city's resiliency. So those are all going to be components of the recommendations for each park that we will present in the plan. So I touched on it just briefly, and you all kind of discussed it. We did have virtual engagement from the beginning of June through just last week with a comment map and a survey opportunity, as well as the parks tours that we were talking about, and then the Design a Park exercises, the summer concerts, and the recreation center on Thursday. We did, here at the parks tours, an increased desire for spaces for older kids or teens, and a system of kind of cataloging benches, thinking more strategically about the placement of benches, and we, people want swings, people love swings, we heard that a lot, and then also thinking strategically about sound barriers, especially around pickleball. If the roller rink is to continue, that that's going to, that's an issue that needs to be addressed. And then, I think at the Design a Park activities, we had a lot of good ideas around maybe a permanent, semi-permanent amphitheater at Scotia Park, even if it's just in the grade, so that we can eliminate having to rent that stage from Oakland County every week during the summer concerts. Something that we had all these magnet pieces and 36 by 48 boards, that everyone could put the magnet pieces with swings, playgrounds, amphitheaters, pavilions, all different types of components, kind of create what they wanted to see at four of the parks that we had heard were, people were most dissatisfied with from the survey. We also attended a Environmental Sustainability Advisory Board meeting to integrate this plan with the sustainability efforts that the city has underway, make sure that the goals align, and that we're furthering those objectives and continuing to support those, because the parks do and can play such a big role in those efforts. And we are here this evening. We will also be going back to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to review the draft and hopefully release that for public comment and presentation, and then, depending on how that goes, potentially having the city commission meet in September to adopt the plan, but again, that's kind of contingent on the comment period. So that's kind of my summary, but I'm happy to have any further discussion, and...
I'm wondering if it came out of your discussion with residents in the discussing of the park, or whether, you know, Hank, it's something with City Hall, but several people have talked to me about, for example, when Scotia Park was redone, sidewalks were taken out of the park. And there are, you know, people who are handicapped, or now are having to walk in the middle of construction in the street with their walkers and risk getting hit, and we don't have sidewalks in the Scotia Park, and we don't have sidewalks in the Statue Park. And is that something, Hank and Jane, that come to you respective of either City Hall and their budget, or is it parks and their budget and plan of trying to make parks more accessible, not only as a park, but also as a walkable community, that you don't go from one street and then lose it and have to go to the street in order to go gain a sidewalk later on?
That is absolutely a huge objective of this plan, that we definitely have identified the need for. In terms of the funding, I think it can be accomplished probably a little bit from both this, you know, city and the Parks Department. The way the Parks Department's fund structure works right now might also be something that we're assessing, just in terms of, most of the maintenance of the physical parks falls under DPW, so it's a little bit of an awkward relationship, just from a kind of administrative perspective. So we're looking at all of those things, and how these things can be accomplished, not simply just recommendations.
Or with grants?
Grants are, that's the whole kind of motivation for the plan, is kind of being able to be eligible for one of the main grant opportunities in the state.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. Michelle kind of alluded to this, and then you just did a moment ago, this whole idea of the roller rink and the skate park, and I'm curious, is that feedback that you're getting from the, whatever, less than 3% of the population here who responded to your virtual response system, or is that coming from the city? Because I know that the skate park specifically has been, for a lot of people, the bane of their existence, and they'd like to see it go away, while others are really happy to have it. And I'm just curious, like, where's that press coming from?
It's, well, I'll say it's from both. I think we know that from our preliminary discussions with the city, that that's been an issue for a long time, but it was not presented to us as like, the skate park has to go. It was presented as, we know this is an issue, this is something this plan needs to investigate, and we need to figure out what we're going to do. If it's to keep it, it needs upgrades regardless, and then if it's not to keep it, then we'll figure out what to reposition it as. In terms of public input, I was surprised, it's very split. And I feel like for every person that you get that comes up and says, I hate this so much, anything would be better than this, if it was just grass, I would be happy. There's the next person who comes and says, this is the only park I go to with my nine-year-old, and this is, you know, we love it, this is where we go, this is how we recreate. So at this point, I don't want to give a, I feel hesitant to say one way or the other what the recommendation, appropriate recommendation is. I think we still are doing that kind of analysis, but just from those conversations and what we saw in the feedback, that was, it is very split, to your point.
On that item alone, if I could ask, do you get just an IP address, or do you get an address? People who, back to the skate park, might say, I don't like it, and how skewed is... how skewed is proximity and, you know, negativity to the skate park, you know, related to it versus the community in general?
We do not get an address because we did want to keep the survey anonymous, but some of the folks that we've spoken with have been very vocal that they live very near it.
Okay.
So that's not, I guess, completely outside of our understanding in terms of knowing that that proximity is playing a big role.
I, I think it would be really interesting to sort of know how respondents weighed in on that. I mean, I'm sure from the city's perspective, there's one of liability. I'm sure some people would argue that there's a better way to utilize that space, and there are other residents who would simply say, well, skaters are dodging, because we've all heard those. So I'd be curious to, to, to find out more about. And this is one example.
Right.
Like, how are we getting to some of these?
Yeah, and...
These concepts?
Yeah, the recommendations are really going to be founded in the input. I'm, as I said, with the filter of just what is technically, what the city can actually, you know, achieve, what's technically available in terms of funding and just realistically what is out there. But in terms of general direction, those options, I think it is difficult to balance the loud voice versus the voice of many, and that's part of this process, but I, I do hope that the, the survey can provide some of those just very quantitative aspect of this many people really want to see this versus people who just want it gone, for instance.
Yeah. And just to be clear, I'm, it's not like I'm leaning into or away from the skate park, I'm only using that as an example.
It's a great example.
When you guys decide on what the, the plan is going to be, whatever that is, and it's up for public comment, how much, you know, weight does public comment have to actually change it once it's already decided by the city?
Well, it will have been decided by the city at that point, because the city will make the decision after that period. So the, generally what occurs is we compile the public comment, we put it all on a table, we make our professional recommendation of like, we heard this so many times, we think this should probably, this should be changed. Sometimes we'll, we'll just change it if it's really self-evident. And then the rest of it is really, we kind of work collaboratively to go down that list and say, yes or no, do you want to change this? And then that is where the city ultimately gets to be the decision-maker in terms of what gets changed at that point, but that's, it's not final by any means. So that's kind of how that iteration works.
Mr. Chair, if I could interject for just a second. I just want to point out too, these are all really great questions, but this is one opportunity for people to hear about this. They'll hear about it again at the Parks and Rec and all of the other efforts that they make to make sure that the public gets it. And then ultimately, the final approval of this will be either a, some form of recommendation from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to the City Commission. At that point in time, there is one last final opportunity for people to comment on it. So there are many places along the way to have that. This, as far as the Planning Commission goes, is informational. Both Jane and I strongly feel that in the past, the Planning Commission has been excluded from this, and they should be included from this. So I appreciate the effort for her to bring this to us so that we can take a look at this. And again, I think your comments are excellent. I know that for the extent of input that I have on this, which isn't a whole lot in this particular case, because it's Parks and Rec master plan, that Jane will take a lot of your comments to heart, make sure that we get every opportunity to get people involved in that, and we should. Somebody had asked whether or not the, the public, you know, the, whether, whether the public input will have a big sway on it. Well, it's all about the public input. So whether or not that goes, the public input is made and it is transposed into her data and her reports, and then gets to the City Commission, ultimately, that's what makes this. The recommendations from the public is, what do you want to see? This is, for those of us that live here, this is our money, this is our recreation department, this is our city, and how do we want to put this forward? So I think that, that we've done that, and I think that Jane is well into the process of getting this done for us. So don't think that this is the last opportunity to ask questions or comments on it, because it should be questioned and commented all the way along the way. And I'm sure that Jane is happy to entertain any other questions you might have.
And just to be one more point to add, just for clarification for us, as well as the public that's here and may be watching, this plan is not coming back to the Planning Commission for any type of vote?
That is correct.
Okay.
This will not be a voted matter for the Planning Commission.
Just want to make sure that was clear as well.
It's informational.
Okay. It's here and then...
So when the specific, I'm sorry, so the specific plan comes out, we want to complain about it, we got to come to the public, the public hearing, right?
Well, you're, in a lot of respects, yeah.
I guess it's just not, there's just like, there's some, like, we kind of can see where it's going, but we don't have like the...
There will be other, there will be other opportunities to comment on it as far as at different meetings.
You should have said comment, I'm sorry.
I think when, when we have, no, because realistically, there may be some stuff you do want to complain about, and that's perfectly fine and fair. But I think that what you have to do is, there's opportunities that will be for that. I am sure that Jane would have no objection to making sure that we all had final copies of this, and then it comes back to us and a copy of that. I'm sure that we can have, and I don't know if you've worked with Ally to put everything on the website, but I thought you did.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, so that's out there right now. So all this stuff is out there right now, and it should be. So as things change, there will be different iterations of the plan going forward. And again, if you have any questions, you certainly will have access to know how to get ahold of people that, that have...
The little plans, like, I actually find this table really helpful. Would the plan be like a table like this?
So...
I understand this is from five years ago.
Yes, it will, the resulting recommendations will be broken out in park-specific table like that, so each park having its own recommendations, and then system-wide table similar to that as well, where it has the amount that we, you know, have an idea in terms of forecasting over the next five years, what it will cost, what the priority level is, when we anticipate it getting done. All of that information will be in that type of table.
And I, my, my last comment would be, you know, obviously the city, I've seen several, I've seen the newsletters, I've seen the emails, I can't remember if I've seen the signage or not, but word of mouth, right? You know, everybody that's in this room that's a resident, talk to your friends, talk to your neighbors that are in the neighborhood, and make sure that the word is out. I've seen in the, in the Facebook, Huntington Woods groups, there are various groups that are out there as well, certain, you know, links to the surveys. So just encourage everybody that this is the time to make your voice heard and, and any concerns or comments you want to make. Alright, I think, any further questions?
Yeah, I have one. Did you say that next is Parks and Rec's Advisory Board, along with Parks and Rec to make the decision, and then it goes to a plan to the city commissioners? There isn't? Or is that, when it goes to the city commissioners, is it going as a public hearing to the city, you know, for everybody to hear, and then the commissioners will hear after that and decide if they do it instantaneously at that meeting, or if they take it back to another? One of the things when you asked, if they're, you know, where it's done, the signs need to be utilized more in the city, just in general. I complain to Parks and Rec and to City Hall all the time that I drive by city signs at Scotia Park, at, you know, Woodward and, you know, Wood, Wood Lincoln and Hendry, and that park's empty, and it's empty at City Hall sometimes, to put it out there. Is there a chance of getting also a good article in the local newspaper that gets delivered to every house, because not everybody is reading, you know, online or something like that, to make sure that they know the schedule and the dates of where they can participate and where they can get their input in?
Yeah, we absolutely can work with the newspaper. I obviously can't make any promises on their behalf in what will be published, but to answer your first question about the timing, the Parks and Rec Board will review the preliminary draft. From there, they can either say, no, we want changes, or yes, we think this is ready for the public to view. At that point, it will be released for at least 30 days of public comment, so that's not going to the City Commission yet.
Okay.
That's just open viewing of the plan, receiving the comments from all residents, and then at that point, depending on what the comments say, if there's substantial changes that need to be made, that's when that decision will be made on terms of when the public hearing is set for City Commission.
Okay.
So the public hearing will result after public comment period of that physical draft.
Thank you.
Yes.
And is it also fair to say that these are recommendations?
They are recommendations.
Nothing written in the plan is a guarantee of changes that will be made?
Correct.
And that much of it will depend upon the funding that is available?
Yes.
So if the city has no funding to make some of those changes, then those changes will not happen?
Correct. And it's not obligating funding either, so it's not to say that you have to try to find this funding elsewhere. They are, it's not supposed to be inflexible policy. Thank you for that.
Are there any dates set for any of these things yet?
August 12th is the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, and preliminarily, September 16th would be the earliest that the City Commission could consider adoption.
Mr. Chair, if I'd like just one more thing too. Jane, if there is any opportunities or you have documents or stuff that you would like distributed, not just at the Rec Center, I'm certainly happy to make sure that stuff gets put out at City Hall, so that when residents come in for some of the functions that they don't normally go to the Rec Center for, the information will still be available for them.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. And we'll make sure to distribute it directly to this commission and have multiple drafts at City Hall. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. I think that now you have... Alright, we'll open it up to public participation. Just come up to the microphone and just state your name and address. You don't have to be a Huntington Woods resident to speak.
Hi, I'm Sarah Rusk. I live at 10120 Hart Avenue, so I live in the center of Huntington Woods. I'm just going to let you all know, this is the first time, I found out probably around 10:30, 11:00 today, that any of this was happening. I have kids in middle school as well as high school, but not in Huntington Woods, so the places that you're going to get out and about information are none of the places I go to. I'm not at Fruit Camp, I'm not at Always Concerts of the Park, and I go away on the weekends. I have other things that I do, but I've lived in Huntington Woods, I grew up here, and I am in my third house, the first I've owned. So we've definitely been here a long time. So just to give that background, my first question for you is, do you have any data usage of the tennis court or the skate park based on timeframe and how many people were using them?
I do not, unfortunately. We don't, we did go out and just kind of observe, but it's, you can't capture that in one day, right?
100%.
It's not going to be accurate. And there's really, there is ways to collect that data, but unfortunately, this, it's really expensive and we don't have access to that for this scale of, of project, and the city doesn't have access directly to that either.
Okay. The other question that I had, and I appreciate that, I know it's hard to do, but at the same time, I don't think the data of the tennis courts and the, I mean, I'm someone who, my family uses the tennis courts, and we've had to drive back and forth to the courts. So seeing that we're utilizing them, sharing them now with pickleball, which is great, pickleball's the fastest growing sport in the, in the world, I totally get that. But that really like breaks my heart that somewhere like Huntington Woods would be getting rid of something that's really important to something that we utilize when we don't use a lot of the services. My other question is, when you're considering these parks, are you considering monetization for the benefits of the city to impact the budget of the Parks and Rec budget?
In terms of like the recreation facility, the pool, et cetera?
Yes.
Uh, I think it's a sensitive question, and it's not something that the Rec Department has specifically wanted us to necessarily answer, but it's definitely worth bringing up again. I, I think it's, it's just a difficult question, but I appreciate that.
And it's difficult because they don't want to, they don't want to bring it up, or it's sensitive to people?
I think that, just, I'm, I'm just saying this at, as kind of an outsider, that what we've heard, you know, there has definitely been pushback in terms of even the idea of a rental cost of different parks, facilities, rooms, things like that. Some people like things the way they are, and change is always hard. So that to say that it shouldn't be considered, but that's, that's been not a top of the line kind of priority at this point.
Okay. And when they're considering not wanting to talk about it, do they also consider the fact that taxes go up because of the recreation?
I, I'm happy to have the discussion, so I appreciate that input.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
Mr. Chair, may I interject something because she brings up a good point. The word sensitive was used. Somewhere in there, the word sensible has to be too. So I think that perhaps some of the questions that Jane was being asked would not be within her province to answer, but I think those are questions that you could certainly have asked to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, because they would be more likely to have that information. And also any information you have as far as budgetary, the city budget's online, so that people would know, if you know to go there, you would know to look and see what part of the general fund subsidizes the recreation department. But those would be questions that would probably be better asked of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jane, but the financial aspect of that hasn't been part of your scope of work, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can you repeat that? I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Just the last part of what you said, I didn't...
That the, that the, the money that, you know, and the finances have been part of her scope of work for this. So as far as this goes, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Jane, but this document, this Parks and Rec master plan will be, play a part in obtaining grants in the future. So they need this document in order to do that. So grant applications with the support of a Parks and Rec master plan would also be helpful as far as that goes. It, it goes a long way when you have an approved document that's gone through the public scrutiny and the City Commission in order to do that. So that, that may be helpful, but any financial questions certainly are things that can be brought up. I also do want to point out, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board has absolutely no authority of what is spent where. That is direct promise to the City Commission. You certainly can feel free to contact Ethan Hahn at our finance department and ask any questions that you might like about that. But the allocation of funds don't come through boards or commissions, those go through the City Commission, who has the final say on it. There could be recommendations, there could be grant applications, but how all that is ultimately doled out is the City Commission.
Just going back to her point on the tennis courts, perhaps I'm mistaken, but don't, can't people make appointments or reserve courts?
One dollar.
What's that?
One dollar.
Right, but I was just, couldn't that be a data point for the, the usage of the, of the tennis courts? I mean, I, I get it, if they're not in use, if, if they're not reserved, that anyone can go there, but...
People can use them, yeah. But we can absolutely use that data point.
I would think that that would be a data point that you could use.
I use them a lot, and I've never rented them or paid them, so...
Fair enough. There is a sign when you go to the tennis court that says you can reserve it.
Yeah.
And it says how to do it, and all that.
Also tells you how to turn the nightlights on.
Right.
So, that's a good point. And I can tell you, I've lived here for a few years myself, 60-some, but, and, and I've never once reserved a tennis court or anything like that, because at the time when I could play tennis, I wasn't aware that you even had to do it. But some of these programs can help subsidize, you know, and help subsidize budgets and user fees, and the pool, for example, but that, that's something that they're going to have to delve into. But, thank you.
Any other public participation?
Go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
We'll go back and forth first.
Hell, Stack 13108 Talbot Avenue. A very minor point, we've talked before. Given the environmental future for this community, what have you been thinking about, not only in terms of trees, but additional shade for some of the parks? And I wondered whether, what, to what extent you were thinking about water fountains, or whether that makes sense or not?
Yeah.
Sort of thing. So I just, that. Minor point, your minutes don't go back, you know, February is the last minutes I could find on the website. That seems strange to me. Also, the videos are largely absent as well, just a minor point.
Mr. Chair, let me, I can, I can look into that, because at some point in time, there was meetings for... was meetings for, some boards and commissions don't meet, so there won't be videos of that, some haven't met in a long time, but I can tell you that the boards or the minutes that Rachel takes for us goes to Ally, and then they're supposed to end up on the website. So I can look into that and see.
Do they only go to the website? Do they only go to the website after we've approved them?
Yes.
Do they only go to the website after the commission has approved them?
No, they go after the planning commission has approved them. So they'll be on there, otherwise they wouldn't.
So like, these ones that we approve tonight are not on the website?
The ones that will be approved tonight won't be on the website until probably within, within a week. He's got a down, Tom's got to download them, and they have to go onto there, and then he puts them into a format, it goes on there, and then he puts it on the website. So, but the, for the actual videos, the minutes go to Ally, and then she puts them on the website. But I'll look into that, that's a fair question.
Want to declare, I still like Hank's idea of appropriating the golf course to expand our parks.
Always wanted to do that.
Thank you.
Hello, Jill Rimshaw, 1273 LaSalle Lane, also Parks and Rec's behind as well, so it's not just this department, there's two months' worth of their minutes that aren't there either, so.
I'll take a look at them all.
Thank you. Couple questions for you, in regards to, you mentioned that only about 220 comments were given on the survey. I, like Sarah, was not aware there was a survey that was out, nor that it was extended. The last note I saw was that it was only going till June 30th, so I think many of us who maybe saw that thought it was maybe had suspended. So I was just wondering with that, of the 6,000 resident, what is your typical ideal feedback participation in those types of surveys to get responses? Because that's like less than 3% of our population.
Unfortunately, typical is about 1%. So if we hit 5%, that's exceptional.
Okay. And based on the fact that this process is more based on community feedback and wanting the involvement, how do you then gain that response and know what to even propose when you're not getting feedback from the residents?
It's, you know, part of the difficulty of the process. I would love to, I, you know, we crowdsource the ideas of how we're going to reach out to the community, we use the knowledge of staff and board members to let us know how we can better reach out. If the pub, you know, if you have ideas, I would love to hear how we could have better got the word out, but that is always part of the, you know, you're only as strong as the awareness around the processes. I felt like we did, all, we covered as many of the avenues as were available to us, but if there were things that were missed, I would love to note that.
And, and I just reviewed this packet that we got today, and you had mentioned that, I was looking for feedback, with the survey, were you asking about each individual park and different thoughts on what they wanted for that?
Yes.
So now that there's an additional feedback opportunity for those of us who maybe didn't participate in that survey, you said you were going, I think, August 12th to the Parks and Rec to give your actual recommendation to hopefully move that through in the next month to get voted on. How are you achieving this information? How are you gathering it? How do we respond? Where is that link? What's the next step?
Sure, so right now, we're in the midst of drafting the recommendations, drafting the plan, so I don't have the plan right at this point with a link to provide, but that will be presented to the Parks and Rec Board, the Board will then decide whether or not it will be released for public comment, and then that's when the link will be publicized to the residents through, again, the e-newsletter, Facebook, the other social medias that the city has access to, as well as having physical copies at city hall, the rec center, the library, and any other, you know, modes of communication that, you know, you have to recommend it, I would be happy to include in the process. But then that will be open for at least 30 days for you to sit, read through on the couch in your living room, and there will be an input form, or you can email, send a physical letter, give me a call, any way you want to get me the information on your thoughts of those recommendations will be how we collect that at that point.
So in essence, just so I'm trying to go through this, the survey was sent out, the information was collected roughly about 3%, now you will collect that data, take it to the Parks and Rec, there's no additional comments, but prior to that, you've kind of concluded that portion for the community. You will then present that, the Parks and Rec Board then gets to decide whether or not they choose to share that information, or they then share those recommendations to the city?
The, will, the recommendations will be shared with the public regardless.
Okay.
It will just depend on the timing, so if the Board says, no, we want revisions, we don't think this is reflective of what the community wants, we'll go back to the drawing board, we'll write those revisions, we'll go back to the rec board, and then they will hopefully say, you did what we wanted, the public should comment on this at this point, and then we'll start that 30-day comment period.
So public comment is suspended until that next step is completed? Until Parks and Rec Board?
And if you have ideas, you know, you can.
Sure, I'm just, there's a lot of us who I don't feel, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, that have, I feel like have some strong feelings about certain things and how we want to see things done, and maybe didn't get to initially participate, and I know that's maybe we're behind the eight ball, and shame on us for maybe not being involved or knowing, but I think there's probably a lot of us who maybe want to contribute and just wanting to make sure, what can we do to get that information to you to help influence that? Prior to the 12th, I mean, that's like 10 days, or weeks roughly, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a card on my way out as well.
Fantastic, that would be great. And then, like the skate park, I have teenagers, they both play hockey at a high level, where they're shooting pucks left and right. I think it'd be a great thing to have a diversity in our community of different kinds of things that would be great, instead of just tennis courts or just pickleball. And additionally, you had mentioned about grant writing as part of your proposal, which I think's fantastic. Some of the Park and Rec meetings that I'd gone to, they indicated they were not familiar with how to write grants, so they have not been, even when they were recommended before doing that. Are you able to provide support in that way, or you do have that option?
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
It was something we discussed with the city as well at the beginning of this process.
Fantastic, thank you for all your work, I know it's a lot.
Any others? I will close public participation. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
And moving on to number, item general six, Metta Review of Site Plans, Review House at 10494 LaSalle.
Hank? I'll go with Gina go first.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Geno Smackey, and I'm the owner of Robshaw Homes, and also the owner of 10494 LaSalle Boulevard. I'm also a builder, which I'm hoping I get to build this beautiful new construction home at that property. And for that reason, I'm here tonight to present these plans, and that we've been working on for six-plus months, and building department staff has been very helpful. I want to thank Hank and Francesco for all their help with all the information that we needed to get this done. We've been trying to get all the utilities shut off for the property to get it ready for demolition, and we're kind of getting to that point. Obviously, consumers and DTE are pretty, you know, a little bit of a headache to deal with to get all those certificates, but we're at that point now. I'm also aware you guys might have some questions tonight regarding these plans, and I'm really here to answer any questions you guys might have, the best I can. Without me saying too much, thank you all for your time, and looking forward to answering any questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point in time, just go over some of the brief requirements and outlines on this. The zoning is R1D, the property contains probably one about 1.5 planted lots, it's actually 80 feet by 125 feet, 10,000 square feet, which in the Bronx subdivision is an exceptionally large piece of property. The following is an outline of zoning requirements and the proposed dimensions. So the height can be up to 30 feet, they're proposed at 25.5. The front yard required is 25, and they're proposed at 25.3. The side yards required are five foot on one side, four foot total, and they're 13 on one side, 26.6 total, so there's plenty of room on both sides of the residence as proposed. The rear yard required is 30 feet, and proposed is 38.3 feet. Their lot coverage is allowed 30 feet, which is 3,007 square feet, and they're proposed as 28, 29 square feet at 28.22%, so they're significantly under their lot coverage, and the maximum house size permitted is 2835. We come up with 2792 as to what they're actually proposed, so they are under the maximum house size. So how do they fit with their neighbors? So the lot to the west is 50 by 125, they're 80 by 125, and the lot to the east is 70 by 125. So they're the biggest lot of the immediate neighbors. The lot area in square feet, 6250 for the first lot, 10,024 actually for their lot, and 8750 for the lot to the east. So as you can see, again, they're bigger, but some of the graduated lots are like that. And 6250 is standard, that's one of the common lots in the, in the R1D or the Bronx subdivision district. So the house sizes, as far as they fit, and this is kind of interesting, the house to the west of it, which has the 50 by 125 lot, has a house size of 2190. Their house is proposed as 2792. They originally came out with 2828, but as I reviewed the plans, it came out actually smaller, and it came out to the 2792. The lot to the east, which is the next biggest lot, which is a 70 by 125 lot, comes out at 1933, so the second biggest lot has the smallest house. So there are some areas in there where people will be adding on over the years, and it's not uncommon to see people add on to different things as houses change hands, as people move out, house sizes change, some people will max them out, some people won't. A lot of it's budgetary, a lot of it's economy-based, and a lot of it is just they're plain happy with what they have, or they need something else. So the style of houses, what's being proposed there is actually a colonial, somewhat of a quasi-colonial, because there are different features in it, and the houses on either side are bungalows. The house to the west is 1.75 stories, their house is two stories as proposed, and the east neighbor is 1.5 stories. The houses are brick, and the house to the east is siding, and they're proposing brick and siding, which is actually more of a stone, if I'm correct in that. So that helps out quite a bit, as far as, and it actually bridges the transition between the two lots. So the garages, as far as this goes, is detached to the west neighbor, their house that is proposed is attached, and again, the neighbor to the other side with the 70-foot lot is also attached. The plan previously that you saw was for submitted, which we did not use this time because they've revised it, the plan has been revised to offer material improvement system with the city's current housing stock, and the new survey makes reference to the city engineers' concerns. Additional concerns, architectural, single-family design standards, standard E, form, scale, and massing, and I want to bring this up because I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is something that is a guideline, it's nothing that would require a variance or anything from that. Front-facing garage doors shall be stepped back from the front plane of the door of the house, and the roof over the garage shall be lower than the height of the main building, even if living space is above the garage. While this would not require a variance, it is a guideline, so you can determine that it enhances the front elevation as drawn, and you're fine with it, but guidelines do not need a variance. So in other words, the strict compliance of this is subjective. The first garage bay is completely in compliance with the guideline, but the second one comes a bit forward to allow relief as far as massing and scale, and additionally, neither come forward in the front of the house, there's a portion of the house in the plan, as you can see, that comes forward in both of those, so it's not making that predominant feature of the house. So having said that, if there's any other questions or comments, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have, as I'm sure that Gina would as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Start on, Gail?
Okay, one of the things that I did catch, and so you're saying that the house as proposed is only 2,792 square feet, not the 28, 28 that was on the, okay, okay.
That was what was there previously, and this, that's not, we redid it.
It's not when they redid with the siding and whatever else, the measurements changed?
I took the scale out.
Okay, that was the only thing that I saw in, in that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I looked at this a couple days back, and I'm just refreshing myself here, it's a lot of house. I mean, the massing is the only thing that sort of gives me a moment of pause. It's, it's nice, it's just big, you know? That's opinion more than anything, so, yeah. No, that's, I'll, I'll circle back if I have something else. Sorry, it's a lot of pages. It's a lot of house, yeah.
The only question I had was about the front door, and I noticed that it does cut in, and I thought that was actually a requirement, but just a guideline?
It's a guideline, and I actually, before I put that in your report, I did consult with the city attorney on that, and he agrees 100% that it's absolutely guideline. Not every single thing that's a guideline will require variance, but there are things that are acts like finite, like setbacks, those will require variance. Guidelines, these are architectural design guidelines, is what that is, so that would not require variance, and that was also run by the city attorney to make sure that that was the case.
But the guideline is for the door to be in front of?
The guideline for the door to be, what ideally was, and I'll go back and I'll give you a little bit of brief history with this, the impetus for that was, was they didn't want the garages to be in the bulk of the front of the house. And if you take a look at some of the houses, which have been referred to in the past as like snout houses, which is where the garage comes further forward, and the front door to the house is 30 feet back, and you can't even really see it, you just know that it's there and you follow the sidewalk to get there. So that was the impetus to this. Houses, when you have a situation like this, where the front door is equal to one bay of the garage, and they've adjusted the other bay of the garage, typically that forms some type of architectural relief, which plays towards the massing, and I think that was Blake's concern as far as that. So when you have a break in that, that's architectural relief, it's the same philosophy as some fenestration for the house, so when you have fenestration for the house, what you don't want is a flat wall, a blank, anything. So what happens is, is that you add architectural features to that, they've chose to do this.
So the bay for the garage door comes forward about two and a half feet?
The one bay does.
The one bay.
The one bay does, the other's flush.
And so with this being just a guideline, and knowing that there are snout houses in Huntington Woods, and I believe there are other houses that also have sort of those mismatched bays?
Yeah.
This would not be the only house to have that as a.
That is correct.
As an architectural.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
And this is not like a snout house, that's not your thing?
No, this is not 30 feet, this is two and a half feet.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's nothing in the current plan that isn't complying, correct?
There's nothing in the current plan that is not complying.
And it's the far right bay that is in front, is, I'm reading it?
That is correct.
Okay, in other words, the bay that's next door to the front door is flush?
That is correct.
With the front door, and the other is forward?
That is correct.
And how many feet forward is it, like a couple feet?
It was like two, two and a half feet.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions? Chair, entertain a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, take that back. Please, public participation.
Hey there, my name's Susan Constance, and I live at 12727 LaSalle. I haven't reviewed your plan, so this is nothing in particular to your house.
I fully understand.
This is more about you reviewing stormwater drainage, and I know in your March 24th meeting.
I fully understand.
This is more about you reviewing stormwater drainage, and I know in your March twenty-fourth meeting? Would this be more appropriate in public participation? No. This is particular to this house. Don't worry, I'll bring it up in public participation too. March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, he said, "Under sustainability, buildings are existing, and we can't step in until a vacancy requiring rezoning. We can tweak some requirements regarding downspouts." So now is the time to look over, no, a driveway is like a huge downspout, at least two or three. You know, some will go to the front, some will go to the back, some hopefully will go to the yard, hopefully it won't go to the neighbor. I don't know where your garage is. Again, it's nothing against your house, but if it's setback, at the minimum setbacks, depending on the roof, where's that water going? Is it going to go to the street? Are they going to drop it along the back? What's the garage? Is it gabled roof? Or it's pulled under the house? Is it going to go around? So all I'm asking is that have you done a thorough analysis of the drainage, which is part of the code?
Mr. Chair, if I can answer that? So what happens is, is that as it is a new house, it's required to have a review from our city engineer, and they have reviewed that, they have made recommendations. Those recommendations are partial of the plan approval, so those will have to be adhered to. There were general construction notes with this that was put back when they were done with Nowak and Fraus, and they have been included on the certificate of survey. So those will all be, as directed by Nowak and Fraus, those will all be complied with. And there is an as-built survey that's required at the end of the process. So Nowak and Fraus, who reviewed the plan to begin with, will also be reviewing at the end to make sure that there's compliance with that.
Okay, so does that mean your concerns no longer will be addressed?
I think a lot of her concerns have already preemptively been addressed, but they will be confirmed to be taken care of. At the end of a new house, at the end of every new house, there is a process where they have an as-built. That as-built is submitted to the city engineer and the building official. They both look at it to make sure that they're happy that the criteria that was set forth at the beginning has been met at the endgame.
So to add to my comment, I understand on three twenty twenty-five that Hank issued, I don't know if it was live or just a paper communication, understanding the blueprints. I really appreciated that he offered that to all of you so you could be more aware of reading blueprints. I did see there was one slide, slide nineteen, page ten, on residential surveys, and I would like to encourage him to offer you a class on reading surveys and understanding grades and downspouts and really getting an idea of where water's going to flow.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public participation? We will close public participation. The chair, yes.
I have two questions to ask in respect to having heard the comment and looking at the blueprints. Am I correct in assuming that only in the front of the garage, on the second bay, and over the living room window is a metal roof? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And additionally, I was looking for gutters, and there are only gutters in the back of the house?
There are also gutters on the side of the house.
Okay. I saw the back, but let's see. At the back, at the backside of the house? I'm just trying to see if it's underneath the living room, you know, coming down or whatever else. You'll tell me which elevation to look at.
That is sincerely, that might be something that my architect might have misplaced him, but obviously there will be gutters on every corner of the house and every bay that has a roof, so I know it's hard to, for you maybe to, you know?
Well, they address that gutters are F, so I'm looking, downspouts I should say. You know, I'm looking for the downspouts on them, and I'm only seeing, you know, I don't see any F on the front elevation at all, and I'm seeing it on the back elevation of the side, and I'm seeing it in the back elevations on the side, but nothing on the front from the side, so that's why I'm asking.
On the front, the water would be running down coast of the street.
Correct.
Usually the, when we do build our homes, usually we get the water to go on the side instead of having gutters on the front, which for example?
No, I understand. I'm wondering where it's coming off on the top of the front, above the bay, above the metal roof?
Usually the ones on the front up here, these ones will come and discharge on top of this roof.
Okay.
And then this gutter will carry it to the side of the house.
Okay. Down over the metal roof on the side?
Yeah, just to kind of keep the house as clean as possible from gutters coming down, so.
Okay.
I have something to propose. I think if your concern is valid, and it's going to become more and more problematic as our hundred-year reigns happen every few months or a few weeks at this point.
Or people change their?
You have not seen the set of plans, is that correct?
Correct.
Because he does include a landscape plan, which does not specifically speak to, you know, stormwater remediation, but maybe as a courtesy, maybe you could offer some sort of notes in the landscape plan that talk about how and where that water will be?
To my understanding, at least for other cities that I worked on, most of that is addressed with the grading of the property on the survey. That's where pretty much says where the berms are and how the water is going to be drained and how the proportion of the water is going to go to the left or to the right, or sometimes, depending on the grading of property, sometimes on other houses, we have to put French drains.
Sure.
But to my understanding, all these are addressed with the plot plan, with the survey, where the engineers come to us and say, hey, this grading is not good enough because this side of the house is going to get more water than that side, so to spread the water with equal proportions and for the water to run forward or back, depending on how the lot is?
Right.
That is concerned on the survey, which even I, sometimes I have a hard time understanding, but engineers are the ones who really understand that. And like Hank said, we are supposed to follow what's proposed and what's approved by the city engineers, and at the end, we also do the grading based on those plans that are approved, and we have to follow those because we really don't want to do new grading once we have all our driveway and all our sprinkler system and all our landscaping, because if the grading is not done based on how it was approved, let's say, a year earlier when we got the plans approved, then usually that becomes an issue. So as a as-built survey, you know, shows that this grading is done based on what it was approved before we started building. And like I said, the survey is what kind of shows all the grading and which way everything is flowing, and that's why we're, we have, I think, there's a berm in the back to make sure water is not going forward, and that's how those things are addressed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think also that when you take a look at the survey, that there's swales indicated on the sides of both houses, on both sides of the house. So any water that does come down from the side or overflow water that's not picked up in an infiltration rate would then be carried to the front part of the lot. You can see at the back corner of the house where your six sixty-three point six, and towards the front where your six sixty-two point two, it's a gradual slope toward the front, and that says part of the swell. So it is on there. It's not on the landscape plan. May not be a bad idea to do that as well. It can't hurt, you know, to add that, but that's just one of the things where it's addressed on there because the city engineer does not review the landscape plan. They review the survey, so it's important for us to have that information on the survey because that's what they review and that's what they sign off on.
Thank you, Hank. Any other public participation?
Hank, how do you quickly tell the percentage of permeable surface area on a job like this?
On this? We use lot coverage.
So what is it?
The lot coverage. Mr. Chair, is it okay if I enter into conversation? The percentage of lot coverage on this is twenty-eight point two-two percent, and they're allowed thirty percent. And that also includes the garage as well. So that's what they look for for that. In the rear yard, they're allowed to cover up to fifty percent with structures, which would mean patios, that type of thing, or garages even, or driveways, but the garage is proposed attached to the house in this case, so that's a non-factor as far as that goes. So that whole backyard becomes somewhat, at least unless they want to put a patio back there, somewhat of a retention thing, but the thirty percent, the fifty percent of the rear yard also applies to structures, so they couldn't put another garage up there and change this. They still can't go over thirty percent total lot coverage. The thirty percent total lot coverage is anything covered by a roof.
Thank you, Hank.
So if they put in a basketball court?
That's not what's proposed here.
No, I know, but just?
Mr. Chair, if that's a discussion you'd like to have afterwards, I'm happy to entertain it.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, the chair would entertain a motion on ten four ninety-four LaSalle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Chair, could I ask for clarification? That should be something more like motion to approve as presented because it meets the requirements.
Right, of course.
If that's how you would wish to make?
Motion to approve the plans as presented, finding that they meet the appropriate guidelines and requirements.
And I will second that amended motion.
Any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like your plans checked as well?
Like plans yet?
I'm sorry.
Would you like your plans checked?
I'll, if you don't need them, I'll stay, stuffle them at least.
Here we go. Otherwise, we'll recycle them.
They're going to make you work for it.
Thank you, everyone.
Moving on to agenda item number seven, matter of review of site plan for new house at San Antonio Boardman.
Mr. Chair, sorry, with you, we'll love to propose, they have a crew here.
Hello. I'm Pete Nowak, and my wife Anna Nowak here today. We're looking to expand our house on Boardman Avenue.
Jeremy Griffiths with Expressive Architecture designed the house. It's listed here as a new house per your ordinance, but it's a very large renovation expansion. Removal of the one-car garage and breezeway screen porch type of a space, replacing it with a two-car attached garage with main bedroom space above that, with a couple other additions to the rear of the house. So we've maintained the southeast corner of the house, the front right, closest to the street, and we've, the house sits a little bit more towards the middle. He's got a large lot, seventy-five foot wide lot. So we've maintained the house where it started. We do meet the minimum setback on the new garage expansion side. That's most of the, I don't know if you want to add?
Hank, do you want to present it, or?
You're okay? Yeah, okay. And again, Mr. Chair, just to remind them, if they have anything else they want to chime in, or they felt that I'm forgetting something, they're certainly welcome to add it back in. So what we have here is we have a rather large addition. It's coming to you because it's not just an addition, it's being reviewed as a new house because over fifty percent of the house is being completely renovated. So having said that, we provided a review that is with a completely renovated house and which is actually going to be considered a new house. So again, the height as considered, maximum is two stories, is thirty percent, is thirty percent, and what's proposed is, I'm sorry, thirty feet, what's proposed is twenty-five point eight-three percent and twenty-six and three inches on the right-hand side. So what's the difference and why this is so weird? Because when you take a look at the plan, the plan has twenty-five ten, which is under the twenty-six feet for them to allow to get the bonus, and yet on the right side where the roof appears lower, it's twenty-six and three. So the difference there is, and I've had the conversation with them, is that they're actually measuring down because the grade falls on that side of the house. So the roof height is actually less than what's there, but the grade falls. So that's why there's a difference, and that's why that number is higher when it looks like it should be smaller. They've actually put the correct number, and again, the way that it looks is they're going two feet out from the grade, which is from the residence to establish the grade, and that's typical. So we didn't have any problem with that. The front yard again required is twenty-five, what's proposed is twenty-four eight, twenty-four point eight-eight. The variance is typically required, but this is point one-two lineal feet, which is the equivalent of an inch. And because the existing area that's being built is not within that inch, they said that even though we're doing work on the front of the house, that would not be needed for a variance. I did also check that with the city attorney to make sure that we weren't going to get into something that we shouldn't, and we are not. So the side yards is required, are five one side, fourteen total. They're offering five point four on one side and twenty-one point five one total, which is significantly more than they require. The rear yard again in the R-one-D is thirty feet. They're showing fifty-four point two-nine, which is also significantly larger than they have to, which allows for a lot more area in the backyard that's pervy, that's pervious lock coverage. The maximum percentage permitted is thirty percent, twenty-eight point two-one square feet. The proposed is twenty-one point three, or just over two thousand square feet. So they're significantly under their lock coverage, which again allows for a pervious surface to be shown and would help with any type of flow. Maximum house size as presented, twenty-eight thirty-one would be allowed by our figures. Twenty-seven seventy is what we have. You have your calculations in on there for what was allowed. The houses to the other sides of it, if I can go over that. On Boardman, you have one lot that's seventy-four by one-twenty-five, ninety-three seventy-five square feet, which is one side. This house is also ninety-three seventy-five, actually seventy-five square feet, but the numbers are so close. And then you have the other house, which is fifty by one-twenty-five, which is sixty-two hundred and fifty square feet. So this is the biggest house on the block, kind of tied with the house next to it, so you have two similar houses. So what you have here, let's go to the house size. The west neighbor is sixteen hundred and forty-four square feet. This will be twenty-seven seventy, but allowed by code, and the other house will be fourteen eighty-six because that's one of the houses that's, one of the smaller colonials, and you'll see that likely with that, that the first floor matches the second floor, and it's just sitting over the top of that. So on their house as proposed will also be a colonial, as will the west neighbor. So then you have two stories on all of the houses. The exterior of the house is as proposed. The exterior material on the west neighbor is brick and siding. The material on their house as proposed is brick and siding, and the east neighbor's brick. So the two houses that have the bigger lots both have attached garages, one proposed, one existing, and the other neighbor has a detached garage. So having said that, if you take a look at the plans, they've offered plenty of fenestration on all elevations for this. If you take a look at the second floor, particularly on the rear elevation, a lot of the siding is on the second floor. The first floor is brick, shows roll locks, shows double hump windows in the back. And then if you take a look at the front of the house here, you'll see that the garage is significantly stepped back from the front of the house. We don't need to apply our guideline for that one. They've complied, more than complied with that. Having said that, you know, you have all the elevations in front of you. If you have any questions, I'm sure that they'll be happy to answer it, as would I, to the extent that possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Hank. Gail?
Hank, just as you commented when you were reading about the front yard, just in our comments on the page that you sent us, the item in parentheses?
our comments on the page that you sent us, the item in parentheses reads twelve linear feet.
It's point one-two.
And it should be point one-two?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Just as it's, it's.
It says it, point one-two, down below that, but I just wanted to correct that part of it. Thank you.
That's okay.
Other than that, I didn't have any questions.
I do not have any questions.
No questions.
No questions. No questions from you as well. So any public participation?
I don't know your house, so this is more about the planning process. Again, the process says the proposed onsite building structures and entryways are situated and designed to minimize adverse effects upon owners and occupants of adjacent and surrounding properties by providing for dot-dot-dot stormwater drainage. So again, as part of the process, I just always ask you to look over where is the water going? Do a double check on all of that. Know where it's going, because I know from having looked at property records at the city, structures that were permitted by the city, from all I can see on the plan, it looks like a garage could have a drip edge. And then years later, the resident says, you know, I don't really like my setback flooding, so I'm gonna put a gutter and downspout on, and I'm gonna shoot it wherever I want it. So, and then we can't go back to it and say, well, it said look this way, and now you're doing it this way. So everything should be really clear. I, I mean, some of these structures I'm referring to were built a long time ago, maybe the procedure has changed, but it should be very, very clear. Those little DS for downspout, where is it going? I've just really encouraged you to do that. And also, at this time, would be a good time to, to let the people know, we're approving your structure with these downspouts and gutters in these places, and you cannot alter them without asking for approval. And also a time to remind them, you cannot add more impervious structure that's going to send water in other places without permits. Hank told me the other day, anytime you pour concrete or put in papers, you're supposed to get a permit. So that would be, this would always be a good time to let people know. And these are further changes, if you decide to make them, they also require a permit and approval, because people are making changes without city approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation? None? Chair would entertain a motion on one zero four seven four Boardman.
I move to approve the plan as it has been drawn and submitted.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion?
Before you approve it. Apologies. It should reference the fact that it approved because it meets the criteria required, if that's a friendly amendment that the maker of the second are willing to take.
What was that?
If that's a, if that's an addition, or perhaps the law restated his motion.
So I, I move to approve, what, sorry, can you repeat that? I was thinking about the water issue and I.
The motions should reflect that it meets the criteria necessary to approve the project.
I move to approve based on the criteria as submitted. Does that get us close?
As it meets criteria.
That's up to the chair.
Motion to approve as presented with the finding that it meets all criteria required and otherwise of all applicable guidelines.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like your plans?
Would you like your plans?
Sure.
Yes.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, matter of review of site plan for addition to one zero four two five.
Hello, everyone. It's my first one of these meetings. I'm a little nervous. I didn't know how to become prepared. I asked Frank Francisco his advice, but he said this can be in talk, so I guess I'm here. So there was like a screen-in porch, three-season porch on the back of a, first of all, I'm Charles Jackson, owner of Class One Commercial Realty. I'm here about one zero four two five LG. So on the back of the house, there's a, it was like a screen-in or three-season porch with windows and aluminum. I just reframed existing wall off east side, and the new one is in. That's it. And I opened the, it was doorway inside the house, the small doorway, I expanded.
Thank you. And again, you should feel free to add if you think there's anything that I'm missing or when we're going through this. Here's the thing, this house is actually a fairly interesting situation, and the house has been vacant for almost twenty years. So from a city standpoint, we appreciate you undertaking the project.
Oh, thank you.
The only issue that came up and the reason that he's here is because the project was started prior to getting permits, and the area where he's doing the work, which normally would be a problem, was actually a screen-in porch that's turned into livable space. So that's going to require permits, and because he's using a different material, predominant material on the house, it also sends him to the planning commission. So having said that, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chair, I'll review this really quick for you here. There's not much to it. The height is no change. It's off the back, they're doing everything under the existing roof, so there's no change with that. There's no change to the front yard, there's no change to the side yard, which is very generous, and the addition is in the middle of the back of the house. So there's plenty of room on both sides before it even comes to a neighbor's property. The rear yard is required at thirty, and they're at fifty-six six, so there's a substantial area of green area in the back. The house currently does not have a garage, it does have a slab. The garage is not required to be approved by the planning commission, but he is required to submit plans and information documents for that, which is not on the docket for this evening. The lock coverage right now is permitted at thirty percent. What is proposed is twenty-nine point five. So why is it twenty-nine point five on such a small lot? Because I have to take out the set aside for that. So whether he builds the garage or not, there's still four hundred and forty feet set aside in the R one D district so that he can build a garage. So in the event that that was bigger, and that would have caused it to go over for that, he would have had to make the size smaller for living space. He doesn't. So the house size, the maximum permitted on this by virtue of what the criteria are, would be twenty-three twenty, and he's only proposing fourteen oh six. It's a real modest addition to the back of the house, but it does give them some more room and some living space. And as he mentioned, not that it's the problems of the planning commission, but he did open up the inside and increase the header so that it holds up the back, so that area flows as part of the house. So it's an internal issue, it's not an external issue. So having said that, the houses on either side are all fifty by one twenty-five. They are all the same dimensions, they are all the same sixty-two hundred and fifty lot area. The house to the west is thirteen hundred and eighty-five square feet. What's proposed is fourteen oh six. So he's pretty much right there with that house. The east neighbor's already nineteen seventy-seven, all of which these three houses are significantly under what could be at that site. They're bungalows, except for the one on the east side, which is a ranch. The stories for both his house and the neighbor's house to the west are one point two five, and the other house is a single story. So nothing has changed with that. The houses are all the same stories, the houses are all the same elevations, with the exception of the single-story addition that he's proposing. The exterior materials on the houses are all brick, except for the sided area, which he's currently working on. And the garage is detached in all places, except for his was detached, the garage was torn down, and it now is set up to have a new garage built there, although that's not on the, that's not on the plan for you tonight. So having said that, this one's really pretty simple. If there's any other questions or anything that you might have, feel free to let me know, and I'm sure that he would also be able to answer questions for you.
Gail?
Okay. You are Charles Jackson, correct?
Yes.
Are you the owner of the house?
Yes, ma'am.
You're renovating the house for yourself, or is it a project that you're doing?
Well, first I started renovating for myself, and then I said, I sent another house in Tappan that's bigger, because I got four kids. We go to, they go to, sorry, they go to Groves, Birmingham Groves. So I lived in Birmingham area for about twenty years, and I liked the community a hundred, it was more of a community versus Birmingham's lifestyle. So I'm interested in the one on Tappan, so I'm gonna finish this one, sell it, and grab that one on Tappan.
Is the addition that you're doing on the back of the house, which is currently a dilapidated screen porch, are you using the same foundation, or are you doing a different slab?
No, same foundation.
So you're just gonna be using that slab and building around and up and making that livable space?
Yes.
And at this time, you are not adding on what could be a four hundred and forty square foot garage, you're just leaving the slab there, but we have to allocate that in the plans?
Well, when I came in the office today, he told me I didn't need to, I guess it's a different permit process.
He does not have to.
He doesn't have, no, he doesn't have to build it, we just have to set aside that amount of space.
I'm gonna build it, though.
Okay. But, okay, that's all I needed to know, that you're not building now, and the only work you're doing is the back, is the back of the house in the enclosed space.
Yes.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
This seems very straightforward, I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Yeah, great, very straightforward. No questions.
Same.
Same.
I have no questions as well. Open up the public participation.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Close public participation, and the chair would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve as presented, as the, as the plan meets the requirements and the guidelines.
Second?
Second.
I second.
All those in favor? May I?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you, thank you.
Would you like your plans checked?
Yes, yes, yes. Sorry, but. I'll get that for you, too.
Some of the stuff is yours, too. Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine.
Bring it to the office, please.
Matter of public hearing on corner lots.
Okay. So again, due to unfortunate circumstances, we didn't have any power here last month. So we postponed this, this automatically would get postponed until this month. So here's the potential ordinance amendment. And again, what we've done is we've provided copies for you in here in the zoning ordinance. So he's crossed out a lot of stuff, and a lot of stuff was a recommendations. I did get an email from Brandon, who had a couple thoughts on this. So what you see here is a correction, if you will, by the city attorney for definitions and to amend the placement of fences, patios, and accessory structures on corner lots. So again, this is specific, so it talks about technical front yards and practical front yards because they're two different things. So if you've had a chance to review this, this one is a difficult one, because you're asking for people to, that have irregular situations, and what you're trying to do here with this is not send everybody that has a corner lot with a house that faces the other way to the zoning board of appeals. What you need to decide if what is proposed here is sufficient for you to feel comfortable doing that. If it is, you will recommend it. If not, you can certainly have commentary and send it back to the city attorney and myself for some more, some more work, if you deem that necessary. If you do deem that necessary, we would appreciate more specific commentary other than this doesn't work. So guidance would be appreciated with that. This one was difficult. Also, because if you take a look at this, I provided you with a redline copy and a clean copy. So the other thing was that we were gonna do was, based on the zoning board of appeals, which has heard the case that I had asked for, and I had asked for an interpretation as a zoning administrator, as to what constitutes an accessory structure, because every one of these lots, a great percentage of the lot that's open is in the technical front yard. So in order to do that with people that were putting planters in the front yard, fire pits, that type of thing, we asked for determination from the zoning board of appeals, which now is in part of the second part of this, which is the introduction of the amendment for the definition of accessory structures, which is also included in this. You'll see a definition for landscape features. That definition is based on what the zoning board of appeals has given for determination and interpretation, so that these two things are somewhat intertwined, yet different. The landscape feature is not considered as part of this, and the reason that I'm introducing it is so that you can set a public hearing for that particular issue. Based on that, right now, this is the ordinance change that will substantiate what the zoning board of appeals has said. So having said that, what you have to do is, for tonight, if this is what your inclination is, you would move to approve the first one, and you would move to set a public hearing at the next regular meeting for the second one. You cannot approve both tonight, because that has to be noticed and published in order for these changes to go through. At this point in time, again, remember, these are recommendations. It will ultimately go to the city commission for a change as it's an ordinance change. So having said that, we've kind of gone through this last time. If anybody wants me to go through it again, or if you have any questions or concerns, now would be the time to put that out there so we can go ahead, and no matter what you do, then we'll have actual input on the record.
Gail, did you have any?
It's a lot, I'd rather not start it, somebody else can. Start at the other end of the thing.
Trying to regulate your regularity.
She feels you're picking on her tricks.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, the one thing that I did notice is that we talked about, that Adam said that we've got to be consistent in what we're calling out and capitalizing, and that's what I started reading to make sure we were doing. If we're calling things technical front yard, then they all have to be in capitals. So I was reading it more as a, you know, read of that rather than a content of that, but it's a lot.
We would be more concerned with content at this point.
I know.
Because if there's any proofreading or anything like that, the city attorney will get that before it goes to final.
And this is what came from the city attorney, correct?
This is what came from the city attorney.
This is not what we did, this is the city attorney giving it to us.
Well, this is what came for the city attorney, based on what information you sent him.
Correct. Based upon our last meeting that we sent to him.
That is correct.
Okay.
I've got a question. I don't think I have order. No, go ahead. Hank, there's references to figures X, Y, and Z.
Those figures X, Y, and Z are available, it shows what it is. Those were not put in by the city attorney, but they will be put in on the final draft. Simply, they're just, they're just drafts, diagrams rather, excuse me, that show where these locations are. So figure X will have a diagram, figure Y will have a diagram, and so will the last one. So those will actually be diagrams that go, like where it says, see figure.
Yeah, it's like.
Start at the other end of the thing.
Trying to regulate your regularity.
She feels you're picking on her tricks.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, the one thing that I did notice is that we talked about, that Adam said that we've gotta be consistent in what we're calling out and capitalizing and that's what I started reading to make sure we were doing. If we're calling things technical front yard, then they all have to be in capitals. So, I was reading it more as a, you know, read of that rather than a content of that but it's a lot.
We would be more concerned with content at this point.
I know.
Because if there's any proofreading or anything like that, the city attorney will get that before it goes to final.
And this is what came from the city attorney, correct?
This is what came from the city attorney.
This is not what we did. This is the city attorney giving it to us.
Well, this is what came for the city attorney based on what information you sent him.
Correct. Based upon our last meeting that we sent to him.
That is correct.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
I don't think I have order.
No, go ahead.
Hank, there's references to figures X, Y, and Z.
Those figures X, Y, and Z are available. It shows what it is. Those were not put in by the city attorney but they will be put in on the final draft. Simply they're just, they're just drafts, diagrams rather, excuse me, that show where these locations are. So, figure X will have a diagram, figure Y will have a diagram and so will the last one. So, those will actually be diagrams that go like where it says, see figure X, figure X will be under that.
And then figure, but like will the figures say like, will they have words in it? Will they just be drawn?
Yes, no, they will not just be drawn.
Will the figures say like technical front yard and practical front yard?
Yes.
Can we assume that X, Y, and Z will stand for either technical front yard, practical front yard, and what's the third one?
Side yards.
Side yard, okay.
I know that there was some confusion around the terminology of double frontage lot. So, I'm glad that that was sort of cleaned up and that language is taken out. Curious, in the rear yard, so we were talking about consistency, I think, in the last meeting. There's no definition of technical rear yard in consistency with the technical front yard. So, that would, so the city attorney did not add that in.
You could do that if you want but the practical rear yard is different because you have a practical front yard and the practical front yard is the issue. So, the rear yard would find that. So, whenever you have a lot, there's a platted, a platted lot, right? So, there's a platted front, there's a platted rear, there's a platted side yard and there's a, two platted side yards. So, the same would go with the technical. So, there would be a technical front yard which would create the technical rear yard which would create the side yards. So, that's the thought process behind that. If there's something that you would like to include, we still have an opportunity to do that.
But you personally do not see, nor did the attorney see a need to add in technical rear yard?
We did not because it follows the standard pattern for, for that.
Okay. And then, on the next page, can you, I'm having a hard time following the language.
No, that's okay.
Can you walk through the side street side restrictions? And the restrictions to, so the things that are prohibited in the side yard?
Okay.
And what is considered a side yard on the corner lot?
Okay.
Having trouble with that one.
Okay, so fair enough. And again, this one is confusing so you're not alone in this, okay? So, let me start off with the section one which is a side street restriction since that seemed to be your biggest concern. Am I correct there?
Yeah, I'm just having trouble following the sentence there.
Okay. So, side street restrict, the side street side restrictions. When you have a street side, okay? So, you have a front and then you have a side yard. This is in the, this is in the practical ones. So, what it is, practical or the, the actual, the, the technical ones. So, you say street side restrictions. So, that means that the side yards are actually where the front of the house is.
Right.
Okay? So, in the front of the house, you, which would be that side, you don't want fences, decks, patios, or other accessory structures that are prohibited in the side yard that is adjacent to a street on a corner lot that is the platted front. So, to try to distill this down a little bit, you've got the lot. The lot's a rectangle. The front part is what fronts on two streets. That's your frontage. The least part of that lot is what is considered the front by definition. So, if you're making this a combination for people like that, there's the street side elevation. So, the street side elevation or the street side technical front would be a side yard. So, to do that would indicate that you could put everything in a side yard that you don't allow any of these other houses to do. So, in order to be consistent and fair to those, you would have a specific section that does not allow these into, into the same area. So, when you're walking down the street and you see a corner house and what you're actually looking at is the side of the house on the front yard and you go around the corner and you see they've got patios and 10 million other things in there, that creates a problem and it's a matter of aesthetics, clutter, if you will. Doesn't include plants or plantings. So, that would still be acceptable because that's acceptable in a side yard. But those are things specifically that would not be allowed as by defined. Now, to go to the next thing, which I think is gonna help clarify some of that, we have landscape features, which is part of what's coming up. So, landscape features would be things that would not be considered as accessory structures. Those would be considered landscape features and those would be allowed in there.
So, this is talking about the technical side yard?
Yeah.
Which is the practical front yard?
Yes.
And so, none of those things are allowed?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, so, sorry.
No, you're good.
So, that, the language at the end of the sentence?
Yeah.
Talks about on a quarter lot that is the platted front.
Yeah.
Why, the corner, what does it mean that is the platted front?
Okay. So, okay, are prohibited in the side yard?
Right, I get the.
That is adjacent to a street on a corner lot?
Mm-hmm, because we're talking about corner lot.
That is the platted front. So, the platted front is called out in this to show you the platted front and that that's a side yard actually.
So, the platted front being the side of the house where the door is?
The platted front not being the side of the door where the house is.
The side, okay.
If there's language or you feel that there's a way to do that to uncomplicate it or unconfuse it, I am 100%. I mean, I beat this to death with that. But again, you don't have to, if there's something that you see that you would want to, you have your options tonight. You could pass this, you could table it, you could pass this subject to the addition of a couple items with the understanding, or you can just outright deny it.
Would, would it help to have a figure there in that ordinance for the, the side street?
We can insert a figure there.
So, I actually can think of an example that would, that would illuminate this that I think Hank, you would be able to then explain it very clearly. So, I'm not gonna name names but there was a house on Nadine which had this whole front side conundrum, trampoline, they wanted to put in a fence?
Yep.
I'll let you take, do you remember this? I think you know who I'm talking about.
Yeah. So, the house was actually, they received a variance to have a patio in what would be the front yard. So, and they did put a patio in the front yard and a trampoline in the front yard and then they put up all these large arborvitaries for screens. We're thinking of the same house, right?
Yes.
So, that, that particular house actually did receive a variance for that in order to do that. So, part of this is, is that you can choose to keep sending this to the zoning board of appeals with the understanding that a lot of this goes to the zoning board of appeals. So, the opportunity to help them out with this, it, you may find that it's better to add some commentary to this. I certainly am happy to send this to the city attorney one more shot and see what it is and postpone action on this until the next meeting but I would need to take some commentary with them. For example, you find this last sentence on the side street restrictions confusing?
Well, I mean, would it be like, would it be helpful to say are prohibited in the side yard that is the practical front yard, like?
You could do that. Well, what I think what he tried to do was to take out an awful lot of that where we had too many practicals and too many technicals and it was actually more confusing the last time around than it was this time around. But, you know, having said that, whatever it is you want to do or whatever it is you feel comfortable, that's what's gonna be important because ultimately what you decide is what's gonna be passed on to the city commission. If you feel there's ways that we can clarify this better, let's do it. I mean, I'm not opposed to that at all. So, that's up to you. Or, you could say, let's make these changes and approve it subject to these changes. Or, you can say, we need one more crack at this and that's fine. But we'd like some guidance with what you wanna end up with out of that.
Okay, Blake?
I think that, once you kind of wrap your arms around the just sheer volume of bloody on this page and how many things have been crossed out, the shorter refined definition makes better sense. I think seeing it with the diagrams, X, Y, and Z would really help to clarify.
So, if you're all inclined to do that, why don't I have him and if he can't do it, we have the capability at city hall to do it. Why don't I, if it's your pleasure, why don't you table this till the next month's meeting and I'll go ahead and I'll actually get those diagrams inserted for you? If that would make you feel more comfortable with that, perfectly fine with that. I'm asking you to also set the meeting for the second one, for the second one so you can do them both at the same time. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that because I think one clarifies and actually helps the other. And I think both, you know, doing both of them even at the same time would certainly, would certainly help what the zoning board of appeals was trying to convey by doing that. So, that's up to you. If that's the case, that will require a motion.
I agree with Blake. I think that usually when we see something that we've crossed off and we've rewritten and we're sending it to the commission for the mayor's signature on it, we see two versions of it. We see what was and what we're changing it to and then we're seeing what he's signing and we're not seeing any of what he's signing and I think it would be.
Well, you, you are though. You've just not seen the diagrams. You have a clean copy.
Oh, it's the next one, okay. With the clean copy, with, with the drawings on it.
But if you would prefer to do that?
Yes, I'd like to see it with, with the illustrations.
Just a motion and I'll, I'll make that happen for the next month's meeting.
Yes. I'd agree.
Chair, would it then entertain a motion?
I'm actually afraid.
Blake's scared.
I'm afraid.
I'll make a motion to table the matter of public hearing on the corner lots pending receipt of the figures referenced in the, in the latest draft.
Incorporated into.
Incorporated into the, into the draft ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll second that.
Go second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And agenda 10, introduction of ordinance amendment for definition for accessory structures.
Okay, so this is the second part of this. And this came about because, as did the front part of this, because we both had, both ordinances referenced specific issues and conditions that people have in Huntington Woods. So, in order to be finite and help them out, not leaving some people potentially treated differently than other people, is why I asked for the zoning board of appeals interpretation. So, they went ahead and they said, well, you know, we believe that these are landscape features and that they're not accessory structures and should be treated like that. Which was great because then all we had to do was create a definition for landscape features. So, landscape features would be a structure or object other than an accessory structure, use of which is incidental to the main building and customarily found in connection with the landscaping of a yard in a residential district. The term landscape feature permanent residential shall include but is not limited to lamp posts, permanently installed artwork, fire pits, barbecues that are permanently installed in the ground and/or connected to a natural gas service, and raised planters and flower pots that are permanently affixed to the ground using posts and other platforms such as the bottom of the flower powder bed is not on the ground level. For purposes of this chapter, landscape feature hyphen permanent residential shall not include uncovered planters and flower boxes that are not permanently affixed to the ground, raised flower beds that are constructed with a border such as wood or stone but have no separation between the bottom of the planter bed and the ground, movable yard art or decorative objects, mailboxes, flagpoles, and address markers. The one thing there that I, I kind of took issue with was that permanent residential shall include but not limited to a lamp post, permanently installed artwork, fire pits, and barbecues. My own personal thing is that in the, in the planning world, barbecues are not something typically is used in the front yard and that's relegated to the backyard. It would be my recommendation that barbecues be taken out and those be relegated to the backyard because we also are not limiting the number of these fixtures or things that we have on the, in this part of the ordinance. So, I guess what I'm asking is that the barbecues be stricken from this and dealt with. If they want a barbecue in the front yard, they'll have to go to the zoning board of appeals and that and define why they can't have it in the front, why they can't have it in the backyard. Permanent landscape features and residential, so the general requirements which is also necessitated by doing this. Permanent residential landscape features in any yard shall be included in the calculation of total lot and yard coverage, meaning if there's a huge art, piece of art in the front yard, the space that that takes up will be included as lot coverage. But, and any type of like fire pit or anything like that. When the place in the rear yard, the total ground area covered by all accessory buildings, accessory structures, permanent residential landscape features together shall not occupy more than 50% of the rear yard. That's true now. Permanent residential landscape features shall not be located within a dedicated easement or right-of-way. So, that's also like in the rear yard, like where there's an easement that you have which is a DTE easement which corresponds with our rear yard setback, not for structures but for accessory structures. Like you have a garage at six feet off the back, nothing could be in the six feet that would be any of these accessory structures slash now landscape features couldn't be used there. Permanent residential landscape features shall not be permitted in a side yard, which helps to clarify the first ordinance that we had, which I'm gonna bring up in the rewrite and we'll have that, so we'll have the figures for that. And then, front yard permanent residential landscape features, no more than one. Permanent residential landscape features may be located in the front yard of any lot. So, that means you can't have three fire pits, you know, two artwork or anything like that. You get one. So, it's your choice what that one is. If you don't feel that one is the number that you're comfortable with and you want it to be two, this, at the next meeting, that would be the time to bring that up when we have for a public hearing. Or, if you know that now, I'm happy to take it back and say, Matt, change this to two. They want it as a couple. Two, front yard permanent residential landscape features are limited to an area of three feet by three feet and a height of two feet. So, that means that any new artworks wouldn't be any higher than two feet tall. So, a lot of the artwork that's there now is grandfathered in but new artwork would be limited in being two feet off of grade.
Or would require variance.
Or would require a variance. So, and again, that's one of those things where your practical difficulty and the self-created issue comes into play. But that would be up to them at that point in time. But you're allowing it. Again, in the front yard, permanent residential landscape features shall be located at least 10 feet from the driveway of a neighboring lot, meaning you can't put them on your property if it's within 10 feet of a lot and it may obstruct the driver's vision backing out of a driveway, which is the whole point of that. We currently don't allow fences going up to the neighbor's driveway or privacy fences. There's a 10 by 10 triangle that you have and that's specifically for obstruction. So, when you look to this way, you can see to the left, you can see to the right so that there's a pedestrian or somebody on a bicycle, perhaps a little kid or someone who's handicapped with a wheelchair, motorized wheelchair or something like that, you have vision. So, that's why that would be. And then it says, permanently installed barbecues are prohibited in a front yard. That's consistent with this and consistent with what I would require but we may have to adjust the front yard language and I'll take care of that before you see your next copy of this. And the rest is the repealer, severability, savings and just all the standard stuff that goes into any of these ordinances. So, if that's something that you would like to see and have the public hearing on, we would be very happy to advertise and hold the public hearing but that does require an advertisement and it does require notice. So, that would be up to you folks.
Okay, thank you Hank.
Can I ask a question of Hank? We're throwing around the word front yard whereas we just came off technical front yard and practical front yard. In respect to this ordinance, how does it apply?
Well, that depends on what you do with the first ordinance. So, that's why that was ordinance was going first, this ordinance was going second. Now, they're both going at the same time. However, that other one will be on the agenda first and to the extent that it impacts it, you'll still have an opportunity to address that concern at the next meeting if you choose to move this forward.
Another question in reading the minutes from the zoning board of appeals, and it's been a lot since May. And it's been a lot since maybe COVID or whatever else. If I'm not mistaken, since COVID, many people came out of their backyards and into their front yards to try to see their neighbors set on their porches or whatever else, set up semi-quasi patios or things like that. Are those things permissible? Are they architectural? Are they landscape? Are they permanent?
Patios are permanent and those are considered an accessory structure and would not be allowed in the front yard in any of these cases.
Okay. Even if they're stone or.
Wouldn't matter.
Doesn't matter, okay.
Blake?
I feel like we have to table this for now. I don't, I mean, I'm not even sure. To Gail's point, like, we haven't defined the thing that sort of, I don't know how we vote on this. I don't.
Our staff suggestion would be is that you set the public hearing for it and you'll get another copy of this. Again, as a public hearing, but I mean, tabling this means that that's not going to be heard until at least September.
So what difference does it make?
Like, the language here kind of depends on whether this first one passes.
That's my, yeah, I mean, does it not?
That's up to you. If you want to do that, you can go ahead. It's just that with this, this is also the only thing that limits the number of these things. So if somebody comes in tomorrow and wants to put 10 of these things on the front yard, we're going to let them do it based on the zoning board of appeals interpretation. That was the urgency in getting this public hearing set.
So the way that it's, so the references to front yard, we'll say, if the other ordinance amend, like amendments to corner lots is passed, would front yard then apply to front yard in any sub section, like the subsection meaning both the front yard and the front of a front yard? So if this says landscape features are allowed, blah, 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 front yard, front yard would include both of those?
It would be both of those, yes.
If the other ordinance amendment is passed?
Then I feel like the former lot people are getting put in another disadvantage, right?
They're getting put at more of an advantage because they have more space that they can put things.
Because the front yard is still defined by the first one we considered.
So they could do, they could do a landscape. They could really do two landscapes then, right? They could do one in the technical front and one in the practical front.
And I'm going to give you guys a bonus. I'm going to ask that the city attorney appear at the next planning commission meeting so that if there's any question about the legalities or the language, rather than hearing it secondhand, let's get him in here. And we could do that as well. So I have no problem with that. I'm sure he'll be fine with that. If you, if you want to set the public hearing, if you want to table it, that's up to you. The only reason I don't recommend it is because we then have no criteria as to how many of these things, based on the zoning board of appeals, it says these are landscape features. If somebody wanted to put 10 landscape features in the front yard, they don't even need a permit for that.
So if all we're doing is introducing this and then we're setting the public hearing, we're not necessarily approving the language.
You're not approving it at all. You're just setting this for public hearing so that you have the method in place to approve it or change it or whatever. And I'm happy to have Matt Celestia, the city attorney, or some member of his firm appear here at the next meeting for any questions you might have as far as the legalities of this.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Couldn't, couldn't, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Couldn't you or the zoning board for now continue to position these things as structure accessories?
No. The zoning board has made an interpretation.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was part of that conversation. And to, I mean, it was a robust conversation. And we had another, another person came in after with the, it was a fire, little fire pit, I'm not saying, right? With another situation with a planter box. And so I would definitely recommend we move forward and present a public hearing to get these things more defined than what the interpretation of this EBA at this point.
Moving, I apologize, I didn't, so I'm just catching up to the meeting. So did they essentially, how did it happen? They essentially came in and the zoning board said this is not an accessory structure? And they just kind of said?
No, I asked for the interpretation of what was an accessory structure. And the reason I did that and specifically listed three or four items is those were the three or four items that we had specific problems with now. So in the event, in the interest of allowing the residents some closure on this and adding getting definition because we could write the ordinances. They determine how the ordinances are being interpreted. So that's why I came forward. And when it came forward and we wanted to go ahead and do this at the direction of the zoning board of appeals, to do so in my estimation without including a number would be a little bit, for lack of a better term, foolhardy on the behalf of the city because we would have no regulation over that. Somebody could put 20 fire pits and 16, you know, planter boxes. You'd never see the ground and there would be nothing that we would be able to do about it. Because whether or not you consider that a nuisance, whether or not you consider that blight, that's subjective at that point. So I can't write a violation or a ticket on that. Not that everything is a violation or a ticket. But by the fact that we are actually creating that situation by doing that without naming a number, to me doesn't seem like something that I would want to represent as okay to the city commission. So having said that, you could do whatever you like. You're absolutely, you could also get to the meeting next time and still not be happy with it and still table it. So, but by at least setting it, you set yourself up to be able to approve it, to be able to put a number on there.
And be able to limit somebody going forward that they can't have more than one because we're putting it out, we still haven't approved it.
Right.
So they could still go after more than one right now, is that correct?
That's absolutely, 100%.
Until it's passed, they can go after 10.
That's, 100%. 100%. That's why we wanted to set this as a date.
And the changes that we see here in this proposal is under accessory structure or structure accessory. Only lamp posts and sign were taken out and the word or is added. No other change has been made to accessory structure, is that correct?
Pretty much.
Okay. And in landscape features, you're only talking about permanent? What if somebody doesn't make it permanent with stakes or whatever else? Can they load their front yard with it?
They can plant right now. If somebody wanted to put a cornfield in their front yard, there isn't anything we could do. There's also the right to farm act. So there's not a lot that you can do about that. Cases have tried that, people have tried that. In fact, Oak Park, there was one adjudicated because people had planter boxes in the front yard and the city was overturned on their interpretation of it. So it doesn't seem prudent to reinvent the wheel and try to limit the same thing. If that's what the people want, then that's what they should have. But this gives the opportunity for a public hearing for people to comment on it. One isn't enough. I need to have two. We need to have two. We need to have one. We shouldn't allow this at all. Whatever it is, I can't even advertise this until you say it's okay to set for a public hearing. So I set it for the public hearing and that part of it is the advertisement. So what's the advertisement? The advertisement's on the city website. The advertisement's in the e-blast. The advertisement is in a newspaper, which we have to publish. So that's where we're at with this. So it would, however you choose to proceed is up to you. With the understanding that right now, there's not a limit on this based on the interpretation of the zoning board of appeals.
And that would occur if we chose to do that on our next planning commission meeting?
That would, yeah, I can't do it any sooner than that. I have legal notice requirements that I have to make.
So that'd be on August 25th?
That is correct.
Okay.
And this is only in respect to front yard? So if somebody puts something in the side yard?
Landscape features are landscape features. And that's what's determined landscape features are not accessory structures. Therefore, are not governed by the side yard, the rear yard, or the front yard. Accessory structures would be. Landscape features would not.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? I mean, some of this is like subjective, right? So like lamp, I'm going to pick on lamp post?
The reason that the lamp post was in there and the reason why the lamp post was restricted is because back in the day, the lamp post was a gas appliance. So when the city originally flagged the gas fire pit was because there was a correlation to a gas appliance in the front yard. They didn't want the lamp post in there. They didn't want power lamp post put in there. So that was it. So that is old. The lamp posts that was there were not necessarily to the electrical ones. But again, this was, comes from standard zoning ordinances and zoning rules that are somewhat antiquated. So taking the lamp post out makes sense.
Right, but we've now. But we've now re-categorized the lamp post as a landscape feature. And we're calling a barbecue a landscape feature.
Well, the reason is, is that the barbecue would be in the back. That's why when I said I recommend we take that out of the first part and leave that as an accessory structure.
Right.
That was the reason why. Because there are certain things, whether they're considered appropriate or not, may be, as you suggested, subjectives. There are also certain things that are found customarily in certain locations on lots. So for example, if you had a barbecue in your front yard, do you then have a patio? Do you then have, so one begets the other? So having that in the rear yard would seem to be the most logical course of action. And if you take a look in the city's Huntington Woods right now, if you have any in the front yard, I'd be surprised. I'm not saying there isn't, but I'm just saying that I can't, none come to mind for me of barbecues in the front yard. And those are permanent installs with gas appliances. Whether somebody pulls one out of the garage and cooks some steaks on the driveway and puts it back in after it cools down, I don't think anybody's got a problem with that. But you're looking at a house and the first thing that you see is aesthetically a barbecue. They found that to be not, not consistent with what the city of Huntington Woods is.
Right, so if we're talking about, so like fire pits, barbecues, we're talking about those two as installed, permanently installed structures? So like the solo stove that I own is not a permanent residential landscape feature because I can move it wherever I want to?
Yes, absolutely.
Or same with a barbecue on wheels?
Yep.
Okay.
As long as you have, fire pits are governed under the fire code, so.
Right.
They're a little bit different. So you have to be, you can't be under any existing power drops. You can't be within 10 feet, I think it's 10 feet, of any existing structure. So there's no spark connection to it. And you can't be under any overhangs.
Okay. So your suggestion is to remove barbecues from landscape feature? Is that correct?
Yeah, that, we're going back to the first ordinance now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or no? The landscape features?
Okay.
Were you, were you suggesting that barbecue should remain as an accessory structure?
I think it should be an accessory structure and therefore required to be in the rear yard. That's up to you.
Because accessory structures could only be in the rear yard?
That's correct.
Okay.
Without a variance.
And then lamp post, by moving that out of the accessory structure, then allows it to be in the front yard?
That is correct.
And does lamp post only referring to lamp post or like, like permanently installed? Like, think of like the little lightings that people have around walkways or driveways?
Those are landscape features, little solar walkway lights that you get.
Solar or, or permanently installed with electricity?
Either or, whether they're low voltage or whether they're solar that you get at Home Depot, they're all the same thing.
So we would also consider that landscape features? Okay.
The intent of this is to give more, to put more in the landscape feature category to keep people from having to go to that. And by, by doing that, it allows us to have some kind of interpretation level with that. So and our guidance is much more clear with this than it ever was before that. So and by virtue of having a situation with residents, it also turned into giving us the opportunity to correct some situations.
Where would fish ponds fit into this?
That's fine in the rear yard if that's what you want to use your accessory structure square footage for.
Is that considered, would a fish pond be considered an accessory structure?
Yeah. I don't know about the actual fish, but.
So do we need public participation amendments or do we just, can we make a motion for a public hearing?
You can always take public participation and you should.
We'll open up the public participation.
They probably had enough.
Thank you for your service. You probably have some of the longest meetings of all of our commissions. I think the last time I came before all of you was in 2022 when you were developing the master plan. And stormwater was a key issue for all of the residents. And the three action topics that really affect.
Mr. Chair, I think she's at the next public participation, not for public participation.
Oh, this is for this one, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Susan, stay there for a minute.
Okay.
So if there's no public participation on, sorry.
No, you're good.
I'm going to make a motion to set a public hearing for this ordinance amendment for the definition of accessory structures.
At the next regular meeting.
At the next regular meeting of the planning commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll move on to.
Okay, back to it.
Didn't want to move all that stuff twice.
Yeah, hopefully I won't back everything over. So the action, the action topics, the three that most affect residents for stormwater is 12, 13, and 48. And I saw that the action plan should be revisited by the planning commission on an annual basis. And back in, I have actually read all of your minutes going back three years. A resident asked, will the commission monitor implementation? And Hank said, yes, at the end of the year, there will be a report as to what we have accomplished. That was 72522. So I actually FOIA'd the city and said, what action have you taken in service of 12, 13, and 48? And can I please have the annual reviews of the master plan? And this is what I received, this big stack. And those are my Post-It notes. I had to work for it. So in between some site plans, Big B Coffee, I was searching for downspouts, stormwater. And so I had to, I had to work for it. And I just wanted to, one, suggest that when you make reference, because people would say, well, we could tweak that one about the downspouts, actually refer to the action item so that you can look back and say, oh, we've worked on those topics, but we haven't worked on these. And then what actions have you actually taken? I also saw a few concerning things. And actually, in the action plan topics, you keep talking about redirected downspouts. And one of my concerns is a redirected downspout means nothing if it doesn't result in redirected water. So if somebody is at the minimum setbacks and they take their downspout that they were initially directing toward their neighbor and they just turn it sideways, but their grade already slopes, so what? It's just a short detour back to the same place. So whenever you keep talking about these redirected downspouts, we need to make sure it results in redirected water so it's compliant with, what's our code? Six, six dash five nine? So that's one thing. Another thing that concerned me is I, Hank was saying a couple times, well, you can't purposely direct your water to other people. Which, you know, ignorance of the law doesn't mean. I think if, if one of our officers stopped somebody on 11 mile speeding and they said, well, I didn't purposely speed, are they just not going to give them a ticket? So we have to be real clear that maybe, that you can't send people water. That's based on six five nine. Let's see. Because six five nine says nor shall the flow of surface water be directed toward or permitted to flow. Another concern I see, I know you guys, we may have to open some cans of worms in this because you've had structures that have been draining to other people's properties for a long time. And I've found records in the city where people complained to the city and nothing was done about it. Or in my case, I had neighbors who altered where their downspouts were. And when you go and look, I mentioned earlier, when you look at when this structure was approved, it doesn't even show that there's gutters or downspouts. So that's why I really ask you to. So, that's why I really ask you to study stormwater. Hopefully, you can get some education. I understand Noak and Fraus is coming to the city commission meeting next... In August, so I hope all of you will come and learn about whatever Brad's going to teach us about stormwater and how they affect residents. Another thing that I saw in here... Well, one, Hank's been pushing these topics forward, and I see 48 is a high priority. All three of these, by the way, were short-term. So, zero to three years should have been addressed. So, you have 48 as high priority and 13 as medium priority. I'd like to suggest that you put 12 in there too, which 12 is an education campaign to the residents about what they can and can't do. Share some of the burden so that they're not breaking code and they're not sending things around. And I saw that that was one of the concerns because Commissioner Moore raised 2/27/23. Are we effectively asking for either you or for planning? He's talking to Hank. Or whomever, a huge amount of hassle when the neighbors are like, "They've been dumping their stormwater on me for 20 years." And so, that's another concern. I've talked to Hank. Hank and I were real friendly until I had some stormwater issues. He tells me that if somebody's been dumping stormwater on your property, draining to you for over 10 years, that the city can't do anything about it. So, then, if that's really true... I said, "Is that the cutoff, 10 years? Where is that listed?" And I think he said something about, well, or whatever the lawyer tells me. Then, maybe you need to change code six dash five nine that says you can't drain it to other people unless it's already been coming to you for 10 years. And then, I would suggest that you take that number 12 in the action plan, the education awareness campaign.
Mr. Chair, can I just... Nobody knows what she's talking about when she says 12/43 or anything like that.
Well, you guys are... You guys should know the master plan.
They don't have it in front of them.
Okay, well, that's my point. It's just, please study. And it would be helpful to residents if even in the minutes, because you're going to say, "Oh, the one about the downspouts? Or is that the one where you drain the residents? Or that's the one where we're going to tweak it?" So, okay, I got to get back to my... I want to get here. So, if that's true, if you're going to burden properties in perpetuity because either somebody didn't notice their... I see it all the time because I meet neighbors now. They're like, "Oh, they're spending all this money trying to pump somebody else's water out" because they don't understand it's coming from this other structure. So, then, if you're really going to burden properties in perpetuity because somebody else took their water, like, "Well, I didn't know the guy I bought it from, Bob Smith, agreed to take it for 10 years. So, now, I, as a new property owner, I have to take it?" So, then, maybe you should educate our real estate agents, a lot of them live here. Say, you know, "Go ahead, put it on your seller's disclosures that you're getting water because you've been getting it forever, so you can't do anything about it." And then educate the buyers.
I'm going to wrap up in about a minute.
Yeah, okay. So, the other thing I want to wrap up is I've heard many people, including I, have been told, "I need to raise my grade to protect myself from other people's water", even though I found where Hank said that he, as a courtesy to his neighbor, being a higher grade, routed his water, so he didn't give them water. So, I do know that code six five nine says, "No one can establish the grade in violation of six dash five nine." So, how can you tell somebody you have to raise your grade to protect yourself from other people's water? So, I think, and I saw in here where you feel like you can't step in until there's a zoning, I think you guys really have to make some decisions about this. And the rule of the game should be manage your own water. Clear and simple, manage your own water. People are spending tens of thousands of dollars to manage other people's water, and it's not fair. And you're going to create a city that's got problems. You can't burden properties in perpetuity because somebody didn't understand stormwater, because the city overlooked managing it. So, I hope you'll take some more... I hope I won't have to search through it. I hope I can find an annual review right away of the master plan and what you're doing. And I realize you refer to it as a priority list, and you have a different numbering system. But for the sake of indexing, it would be good if you referenced those action plan topics by their actual number because that's the way residents will recognize it because they're familiar with the master plan. Thank you for hearing me.
So, this is the 2008 master plan for the city, first page here. And I quote, "No plan can achieve its full potential unless its recommendations are implemented." It appears most of the people running the city have not read that. And I just want to reinforce what Susan said. That is, this issue of stormwater management is not going to go away. Given the environmental change we're experiencing, it's going to get worse.